I would now like a motion for approval of the agenda, please.
So moved with the addition of the HR addendum.
And is there a second?
A second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? We have an agenda approved. Moving on to recognition of the audience, we have Darcy Kors has signed up to address us this evening. And feel free to come up to the podium, Darcy. At this time, the board will hear comments from the public. We ask that each speaker who has signed up to address the board state their name and address for the record. We would also ask that each speaker refrain from using this forum to criticize or complain about a specific employee by name. The board is interested in your comments and will listen carefully, but is not obligated to respond or debate issues in this forum. Should you desire a written response to a specific question, you may request it. This evening, you will be allotted a maximum of four minutes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. My name is Darcy Kors. My husband and I had a son that graduated from North High in 2011, Alex Kors Benson. Alex had some wonderful teachers as he started out at Madison Elementary School, Guy Van Oet, Ginger Dietz, Kim Belgar, Dave Markart, Joe Deutsch, to name a few. Alex loved school but was unable to read. And I came in front of the board years ago stumping for reading recovery. And if it wasn't for that program, Alex wouldn't be where he is at today. So I just want to thank you for that. Being unable to read, I kept buying children's books and reading to him. It would be four to five books every night. When he grew out of those books, I gave over 200 books away that I had been reading to my son, trying to help him. I was approached when Alex was in first grade, and they asked if he could attend a reading recovery class. And my husband and I both agreed that that was a very, very good idea because he could not read. Alex learned to read, and he was doing very well by Christmas time. It was a relief. We didn't have to cry every night at the kitchen table and fight over reading and trying to learn how to read. When Alex was in sixth grade, he was asked to attend a career counseling session, and we were a bit surprised that, you know, at sixth grade, he was going to figure out what he wanted to do six years from now. So when we went to this career counseling session, there was another parent with their daughter there. We were really kind of amazed that, why is this other child and parents in here with Alex and my husband and I? Well, to my husband and I amazement, we were told that Alex would probably be a non-skill labor unless he went to a trade school. Otherwise, it might be a minimum wage job. Okay? So I thought, well, I don't know how you know what Alex wants to do in another six, seven years, but we'll figure it out. Alex entered junior high at Ben Franklin and then went on to North. He seemed to get along with all the students and teachers and enjoyed school. My son went to bed every night at nine o'clock unless he had a swim meet. And I am not telling you an untruth here. He did because he really enjoyed his school. So he put everything he had into it. His grades ranged from As to Cs. When he went to North, he joined the swim team in DECA. And his swim coaches, Dick and Skip Fisher, they were amazing men. They were just amazing. If Alex's grades started to slip a little bit, I'd call Dick and say, Dick, can you talk to Alex? And a couple of weeks later, he is doing good again. Mr. Erickson fueled a passion in Alex to speak in front of people when he was in DECA. He was able to attend the National DECA Conferences in Minneapolis and Fort Lauderdale, Florida. It was a great experience for Alex. And he missed both his junior and senior prom, but he came home with a wealth of knowledge. In December of 2010, Alex told us he wanted to join the Marines. My heart fell to the floor. He wanted to become an armor and learn about guns and everything he could. He physically trained all summer. He would ride clear to 52nd Avenue, we lived on the north side, and would run and go work out and do everything he could so he was ready. He entered the Marines in September of 2011, finished basic training in San Diego. He went on to Armor School at Fort Lee, Virginia for six weeks, where his average test scores were 98 percent. Then he was based out of Camp Lejeune, North Carolina. He served six months in Spain with a crisis response team working in Africa. And Alex was honorably discharged from Marines in September of 2016 with the rank of sergeant. We're pretty proud. Alex applied for gunsmithing school at Yavapai College in Prescott, Arizona, and was accepted just last year. His first semester went well. He loved it down there. He earned a certificate of excellence with a four-point GPA, and he is second in his class out of 50. This last semester, he got another 4-0. So we were pretty proud of him. One more year, and he's going to graduate, and he will be a good gunsmithing person. He works part-time at Owens Armory out of Prescott and bails and repairs guns for people all over the world. Now, gunsmithing school is pretty technical. You have to be good at math, the use of machining tools, and a host of other technical methods. Personally, I think my son is boring, but he loves what he's doing. He loads his own bullets, which is quite a precision project. You have to know what you're doing to load bullets, grains of powder, tips to use, and so on and so on. He's also gotten into long-range shooting. With this, you have to know how to calculate wind speeds, distance, type of weapons, bullets for each match that he goes into. This is no easy task when you're shooting against other people that have been in competition for years. Alex is a determined young man who intends to succeed at gunsmithing. We're very, very proud of him. And I just want to hope that someday, this will never happen to another child, that you're going to tell him, he's going nowhere because he couldn't read in first grade. And I'm not putting anybody down. I just hope the career counseling is just a little bit different than it used to be. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to staff reports. Laura, do you have a report from FEA?
And I have a microphone. So maybe Lynda and Dinah and Jeff would like me to do some singing and dancing tonight?
Sure.
Whenever you feel like retooling how you do school board meetings to make them sillier, you let me know because I've got some ideas. Meanwhile, I do want to say publicly, yet personally, how much I appreciate working with Jeff this year. It wasn't an easy transition, and I think the job, all our jobs, gets harder all the time. But you look at him, you don't see. I mean, he's not the kind of guy to advertise, wow, I didn't sleep at all for the last seven nights because I'm so stressed about this or that. But he does. And he takes it seriously, and we're all better for it. So I do want to thank him. And Lynda and Dinah, it's been great working with you, too.
That was a nice report. Thank you. Moving on to RS1 Academic Performance Monitoring. Dr. Agri, are you introducing this?
Yes, I am. Thank you. Before I start, I want to introduce a staff member that some of you may have only heard her by name, but she's very vital to the academic achievements and all the great reports that we have access to in Fargo schools. So Jen Sauer, I think she's hiding back there. Jen has been a long-term employee of Fargo schools back when I was curriculum director and had opportunity to get into a lot of classrooms. Jen was one of those first-grade teachers that you would go in the room and you could share it with anyone and say, you're going to learn something in this classroom. She just had the passion and a heart for kids, and she's had many, many roles in her years. And we rely very heavily on her. Most recently, she works with MTSS primarily A way back, 15 years ago, Bob, maybe, RTI. We started talking about how to improve that process. Jen has been vital with MTSSA, working with Stephen DeRoe, who was here last month and was able to highlight some of his great work by Bill. And now with MTSSB, she is a partner with Kim Myers and works tirelessly. So tonight, I'm not asking her to do a report, but if you ask me any really tough questions, I might have to look to Jen because she knows this information inside and out, and is just dynamic and does an amazing job in providing our teachers and our families with great data. So thank you, Jen. So Bob and I were asked to talk about two different concepts tonight in our student achievement report. And one was just really looking at third-grade literacy and how that may or may not impact moving into high school graduation, as well as retention, and to what our students do beyond high school. So there's a lot of data out there for you to look at, and sometimes it gets overwhelming because it's so big. So we're going to try to hone in a little bit and give you some information without overwhelming you what is out there. You do have access to this through our hub, thanks to Jen and Stephen, and on our strategic plan dashboard, which is something that I'm very proud of, and you should be as well. So as we get here, you see this a lot when Denise Jonas presents to you because she uses this as kind of her access point for you to look at some of our reports. And tonight, we're looking at achievement. And one of the first pieces of data I want to share with you is our AIMS Web. And we have used AIMS Web for many years. It used to be called Dibbles, and now this year, it's AIMS Web Plus, but it's all Pearson Publishing Company. And AIMS Web is really quick assessments that we utilize primarily K through 5, but we also use it with students that may be on an IEP 6 through 12 for progress monitoring. It's considered a universal screener, meaning we use it with all of our kids, and they're very quick, one to three minutes. We have an assessment team that's mainly retired teachers that we are very fortunate to have. We utilize them three times a year. So sometimes winter gets to be a little difficult for the snowbirds, but they're very highly trained, they're very passionate. What's nice about it is they can come in and they're focused on one thing, but they don't have a relationship with the kids. They're the very warm, approachable teachers, but they aren't swaying that data based on what they know about what the child has experienced or is experiencing. So we have that opportunity. It looks very different at each grade level. Obviously, a kindergarten, you're not going to use the same assessment as you are a fifth grader, but they build upon one another. In kindergarten, it's really looking at letter recognition, the sounds of letters. We're going to look at third grade specifically tonight. So if I look at the district and we go to third grade, some of the conversation has been about what is those indicators we look, and maybe way more heavily than other assessments. So we're going to look at the RCBM, which is Oral Reading Fluency, basically, a curriculum-based measure. And really, what that does is students read for one minute aloud to a teacher, and they are tracking accuracy as well as fluency. And that is a big indicator of comprehension and future success of reading. And Jen and Stephen have done a great job. So when you have extra time this summer, you can look down on the bottom. There's an explanation of all those different assessments. This one has a video, so if you click on that link, it's actually a student that is reading with a teacher, and they're marking this piece of text. And so you can see, this is what the teacher is scoring. And then this is actually how the student scored. And you can see that they had 20 errors, which is the accuracy, and they read 66 words correctly, and they would be at low risk. So with AIMS Web, it turns into, we talked a lot about proficiency, and with AIMS Web, it's low risk, no risk, and some risk. And with AIMS Web, students who score in the low-risk or no-risk category, it's a predictor of their success on state assessments, about 75 percent accuracy. So it's used as a screener to help us identify kids who might need more in Tier 2 or Tier 3, but it's also helping us predict how well students will do on future state assessments. So I won't show you those pieces. But just to give you kind of a overview of what this looks like over time, our trend data, on the left-hand side, you will see that that is our students who made yearly growth. And with AIMS Web, it's given three times a year, fall, winter, and spring. We track kids from fall to spring and identify if they've made their growth goal. And then you'll see on the right side, students that are proficient. And we have more students making yearly growth than proficient, which I would infer is a good thing because we know students who are not at grade level need to make more urgent and greater growth gains to become proficient. So if that was inverse, we would be concerned. So we would hope that by kids making that growth and making more than a year's growth, they would eventually become proficient before they leave us, especially before they leave elementary school. So that's our AIMS Web data. And again, you can sort this by clicking, because Stephen and Jen are magical. You can do all different kinds of reports and learn about AIMS Web when you would like to. And there's also a Learn More tab that's going to give you even more information. If I go back up to achievement, you can see in our data, we can look at our benchmark assessments. We use Fontis and Pennell in our district, K through 5. It's not going. There we go, thank you, Bob. And again, I'll go to the district data, third grade. Our benchmark reading assessments are given by the classroom teacher. In kindergarten, obviously, in the fall, we do not give that, even though some of our kindergartners do come in with some capabilities to read. That would be something optional to kindergarten teachers, but we give it both fall and spring in grades 1 through 5. And again, on the left-hand side, we're looking at growth, and on the right-hand side, we're looking at proficiency. And this data and that inference I made is pretty similar. We have a higher percentage of kids making one year's growth than we have making proficiency. What's also telling about this data is that when we think about MTSS, that we talk about, whether it's behavior or it's academics, if it's a strong Tier 1 or a strong core, we have about 80 percent of our kids that are proficient. And we have 10 to 15 and 5 to 10 that are in that targeted Tier 2 and then the intensive Tier 3. And some of the students will always need that extra support, and that's our jobs, educators. And it's not that we're not complacent. We want 100 percent of our students to be getting what they need at a core, but we also have to be realistic that we have those supports in place, just like if you're diabetic, you need insulin, you will always need that insulin. You can still be successful. It's just an extra support to help you be successful. So there's more information, again, on the bottom about the benchmark reading assessment. You can look at the scoring sheet. What's unique about this beside the teacher being the one who's administering it, which is very time-intensive for our teachers? So it's a lot of classroom management to get the independence, especially in the fall, so the student can sit one-on-one with a student while the other 22 kids do something else. So we have a lot of structures in place prior to that benchmark window being open, but it is very comprehensive. So every other level, as they're working along with the student to identify where their independent and instructional level are, is different genres. So the first text will be fiction, the next text will be nonfiction, and they move up the levels till they identify the spot where it is the student's instructional level. So that universal screener that we have in AIMS Web helps us identify students who are possibly at risk, and then the benchmark helps us find where every student is instructionally so we can meet them where they are. And the third piece of data I would share is off of the North Dakota site, which you will see kind of mirrors our dashboard. I think there was some looking on our site and some sharing by Dr. Gross about some of the great things that was happening in our data analysis department. Something to know about NDSA, you likely know this, but with the new state standards, the Common Core, North Dakota State Standards, we have had a different assessment every year for three years. The assessment's given in the fall. We don't have our scores from this year. So the most recent scores we have would be last year. There will be a cut score group coming out to Bismarck, I think in July, where they'll create those cut scores and score those assessments from this last fall. But we don't have trend data because we don't have the same assessment year to year. But this is the data that they have, and this shows Fargo. And the ELA would be our reading and writing. And other state is on the top, and the district is on the bottom. And you can see, we almost mirror them exactly with the number of proficient students, partially proficient, novice, and advanced. So they're very similar to one another. With that, Bob is going to talk about retention rates.
So the next piece of data that we were asked to talk a little bit about tonight was really at the high school level. So what we want, and our students who leave us, and then what's next. So a new piece of data that we have added to the dashboard is a piece of data around those students who attend one of the North Dakota University System schools, and if they need to take a remediation class before they can enter their English or their mathematics course that is part of their major. And tonight, Mr. Cody is here, and in a minute, I'm going to tap into his expertise. Mr. Cody is our principal at Davies High School, to talk about one of the things that we're putting in place this school year at all three of our comprehensive high schools in a response to this data. For some of the students who maybe need some of those remediation courses, but what are we going to do to preemptively help them so that that number becomes smaller and smaller over time? But as you look at the dashboard and you go to the achievement piece, over here, we have the North Dakota University System retention rate. And as you click on that, just like Dr. Agri showed you about third-grade information, we can click on this button, and we have placed on our dashboard the last five years of data. These are the percentage of students who have successfully entered the North Dakota University System without needing any remediation. So you can see, over the past five years, that has averaged from 80, mid-80s to 90 percent of students who did not need that. When you ask about what is that based upon, the North Dakota University System has created basically a list or a checklist of different assessments that are used, and a student must enter that system at a particular cut score. Probably one of the ones that we're most familiar with is the ACT score, and it shows you a minimum score. And if a student then scores below that, they then need to enter one of those remediation courses. But you can also see there are a variety of other assessments that a student could take. Some of them, they may take as they are entering a college or a university. Others are connected to one of the things that we're going to talk about tonight, which is this Pearson Clem and Cream opportunity. There is a similar set of cut scores when it comes to mathematics. And again, you can see where the cut score of the subtest of mathematics is, and then some of the other data or other data points that might indicate that a student needs a remediation course or not. But if we come back to the data, this would be the students who, across the past five years, who have entered the university system and have been able to go right into their English and math that are associated with their major. The data allows you to go into a little bit more detail if you click on the year, and then that breaks it down into the two different areas of mathematics and English. And what we wanted to do is also provide a little bit more data, so if you hover over the top of one of the bars, you actually get to see the number of students who entered and the number of students who then needed that remediation. So all of that data is available, both for math, for English, for our three comprehensive high schools. And if I click this back to district, I have that for the past five years. So as we look at the data, what we want to say is, how can we make sure that that number of students who may need that remediation course gets smaller and smaller over time? And I think there are two major efforts that are taking place across our system. One is the work of our course captains, and we have 98 teachers who have stepped forward to say, I will lead some of the curriculum work across the system as we really look at what are those critical standards, or we call them essential learning outcomes, that a student needs before she or he leaves seventh grade to go to eighth grade or leaves class at the high school to that next class? And really define what those essential pieces are, develop some collaborative assessments around them, and then be able to use that data to provide the remediation in that course or class to help kids be more and more successful. And also, to identify areas that we need to, as a system, do better when it comes to professional development for our staff or other resources. So I think one big piece is the work of our course captains and what's in our strategic plan of being a standards-based system. The other piece is a remediation opportunity that we are offering ahead of time so that a student who is identified can take what's called a Clem or a Cream class while they're still in high school. And if they are successful on that opportunity, they are guaranteed to not need to take that remediation. So we're trying to do some work at the course level, but also at the remediation level. And that's why I've asked Mr. Cody to be here, to talk a little bit about that opportunity, that remediation that's being offered at Davies High School. He's going to talk about it from the perspective of Davies High School, but a similar thing is being done at South High School and at North so that all students across our system have that opportunity. So with that, if I may just turn it over to Mr. Cody to talk a little bit about that work.
I thought I was here to get golf tips. It's Tuesday night, so I was wondering, you said we were going to play golf, but I guess... So yeah, I think I'm here probably because I'm not necessarily the only one offering this. As Bob said, North High and South High, they're doing similar things. Everything I'll share tonight is from our perspective of the things that I'm trying to incorporate at Davies High School. I think Andy and Todd just have a little more rank than me, so here I am, and I'm happy to be here as well, too. Just real quickly, I'd echo Laura's thoughts. Dinah and Jeff and Lynda, from a principal's perspective, just thank you publicly for your years of service for our students. And I don't know, is tonight the final hurrah? This is it? Okay. Hurrah. Well, I've never been shy from a microphone as well. And then just another funny tidbit, I was told from somebody that this was the year to have your last name end in SON if you wanted to run for school board. So I see, Robin's here as well, too. But so, I'll just give you a little bit of a foundation background. Many high school graduates planning to attend area colleges are in need of some type of English and/or mathematics remediation. College Ready English and Mathematics. People say, what's this cream? What does the acronym stand for? So it's College Readiness for English and Mathematics. It's created with the intent to identify high school students who are in need of some level of remediation based on their ACT scores and to provide those students with the knowledge and skills to make them college-ready. In conjunction with the Department of Public Instruction, this is being offered from the Dakota College at Botino. It's an online course, and they have agreed to facilitate the Cream program to reach both rural and urban schools interested in this. Cream is very flexible, and it allows schools to offer the program either through after school, through a program offered during the day, or perhaps even during summer school. Collaboration with Pearson's My Learning Lab will create an individualized, safe-paced learning lab for each student. The student will, first of all, take a pre-test to establish the modules in either their English or mathematics. What that does is that builds a personalized module for that individual student, identifying those areas of weakness and those areas of strengths. The Cream Math and English classes then allow the student to work throughout modules, and the student then has to master that at a 70 percent accuracy before they then go on to take the final exam in that particular skill set. What I did at Davies High School, and again, is very similar in North and South, but again, I can only speak from the perspective of what I've done, is I took a list of this year's juniors that took the ACT that did not hit a 21 on their math or an 18 on their English. So those of you that are familiar with the ACT scores, those are the two college-ready identification numbers. So again, it's a 21 on the math and it's an 18 on the English. So again, we have so many access to charts. I ran that list of students at Davies High School. But what I also did is it generated a little bit of a list with, obviously, students that are significantly below. And so then I visited with our counselors, and I said, let's take a look at those students that meet either or of those criteria and also have an 18 composite. Now, my hypothesis was that those are the students that are more likely going to go to college. And being a father of four children, I'm thinking, this is a way that we can save significant dollars for those families. Because if the student was below that college readiness, they aren't even going to be able to access those 100-level courses in the math or the English area. They have to go directly into these remedial courses, and those families are paying those tuition. So what we did is we identified these students, and there was a very good chance that these students were going to be going to college. And so what I did is I then sent out an all-call and just basically explained the program, what we were doing, and how their child was identified. We visited with some of those very students as well, describing it. Sometimes it didn't quite understand what was going on. Got a lot of calls back from moms and dads asking about the program. I was able to secure, after this particular point, I was able to secure about a dozen commitments. What we did is we identified this class as a period eight class, probably not the most popular, but it's the one that was the most open to our seniors. A majority of our seniors don't have an eighth-hour class, and so we found what particular hour would there be less disruption to the student's schedule. We staffed it with a 10 percent contract with a certified math teacher and a certified English teacher. The class will meet, again, that flexibility, we're going to meet Mondays and Wednesdays with our English, and Tuesdays and Thursdays with our mathematics all year long. Students can come in and out of that over the course of the year. It's built into their schedule. It's built into their schedule. On top of those dozen students that we've made the commitment, a number of those phone calls were, well, my student's going to take the ACT in June, or we're thinking about doing it again next fall. Well, if they still don't hit that ready mark, then they can opt back into that class. So that opportunity is going to be there for the entire year. We also know that our counselors have senior conferences. Those of you that maybe had students go through our school system, we have senior conferences every year. We're quite confident that this will be a point of conversation in those senior conferences saying, your child isn't quite at that readiness level, and they're going to be more than likely going to have to take that college readiness class in the remediation. So here's an opportunity that we're offering, and would you consider this? So what I would say at this point in time is that there's great progress being made to just the identification. I think part of this is, if you look at the, the, the North Dakota Legislature allocated some dollars, so this is free to those families as well. And so there's no cost out of pocket. And so for our seniors, it'd be particularly no cost and of much interest as well, too. So I think that's about as quick as a quick flyby as I can give to you about the college readiness, English and mathematics, if you're wondering what that was. And I'm open for any questions or conversation.
But what we wanted to show tonight, and thank you very much, Mr. Cody, is that the data is there, we are tracking that. We are looking at, just like in third grade reading and math, we want to make sure that more and more of our students are at the mark that we want them to be, and really looking at two different approaches to make a difference in the data. I think this will be a wonderful opportunity for our students moving forward, and fewer students then will show up here as needing that remediation, and more will be able to go right to that university system and write into those courses that will directly impact their major. And if I may, before we're done, I think we've thanked a lot of people around the table. I think there's one more person that we also need to thank. This will be Dr. Agri's last board meeting tonight, and I want to say publicly that it has been an honor and a privilege to be working with you. You will be missed, both in teaching and learning, but in the Fargo Public Schools. So thank you very much for all that you have done.
Does anyone have questions? John?
Not a question, but I've had the great opportunity a couple of times during my liaison visits to observe the Ames Web testing, and those retired teachers are amazing. Thank you, all of you, for watching this, for coming back into our schools and doing that. You see these kids lined up, all various levels of reading ability, and you saw a little bit of one of the tests for third grade where they have to read out loud this long section. And for some of those kids that might struggle at that, it could be a frustrating experience. And those, every time I've seen it, it's just been amazing, the encouragement and the comfort that those teachers are able to give and bring out the best in those kids. And it's just another one of those things that we see so much across our district, from our teachers, their devotion and their ability, and it's really wonderful. And so I'd recommend to all the other board members, when you're out there in your liaison visits in your elementary schools, try and find out when that's happening, because it's a really, really cool thing to see. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Anyone else? All right. Thank you both. All three of you, I should say. Thank you. Moving on to 4C, Marzano Evaluation System Report. Brittany?
All right. Thank you. And thank you, Dr. Grolls, for bringing that goodbye to Dr. Agri up right before I was going to speak. I appreciate that. Perfect timing. I'm trying not to burst into tears or anything. Well, thank you for this opportunity. A lot of this is, the beginning of this is repetitive, just the background information on the Marzano evaluation tool that we use for our teacher evaluation. So I will not bore you with it again and again. I will kind of scoot forward through this, but just as a general reminder, the purpose of this piece of the Marzano evaluation report is to meet our EL6, which is the staff evaluations, of course, that we do, and part of our strategic plan, Strategic Initiative Six, which ties back to our equitable resources and planning, ensuring that we do implement a framework that ties to our teacher and principal performance appraisals. And then our indicators of success or results is that we do this annual report to the Board of Education. So that's why you're hearing about it today. As we look through this, again, like I said, a lot of this is historical, and I won't read it to you, but if you do have any questions on it, please let me know. But I did want to talk about, again, as part of the SA requirements, we now report the data each year to the state through DPI, through using the Stars system. So this year, they did switch it around a little bit. Usually we report it in the fall, or at least we did last year. This year, we report it in the spring. So it is due by June 30th, so we've just entered all of the data for all of our schools. And you can see the total number of ratings used or used to calculate that data, 6,648 observations conducted by all of our administrators this year on all of our classroom teaching staff. And then just the different levels of the scores that were given based on the observations that were conducted. So when you consider an observation, that's a snapshot in time. That's one point in one day. But as you look at that, you can see where all of those observations fell for those classroom staff that were being evaluated. And then we do need to report what they consider ineffective teaching, and that's those either beginning or not using when it comes to strategies that they were observing or looking for at that moment. And luckily, we have very, very, very few of those. So again, looking, which is similar to last year, at that 1%. When it comes to looking at what's going to be opening up for the upcoming year, we kind of reflect back to where we started. So when we looked at 15, 16 school year, and we started implementing the Marzano framework, we have a couple different domains. So there's four of them when we're looking at classroom. And you have Domain One, which is actually made up of 41 different elements. So the Domain One is the largest. And when you look at that, it goes through design questions, five, six, seven, and eight. And that's what we opened up originally in school year 15, 16. When we got to school year 16, 17, we had a little variance depending on level. Middle level added in DQ2, and then elementary's added in DQs 2 and 3 plus the existing. And then the high school added in, or high schools, I should say, added in all of DQ1, or excuse me, all of Domain One. And I'm trying to remember, when we, elementary added in 9 for this last year. So have that addition. And then as we look forward for what we did for 17, 18, everybody added in Domain Four. So the first year we had Domain Four open was just this last school year. And that's that collegiality and professionalism area within Marzano. As we look forward to 2018, 19, we will add in Domains 2 and 3, which include the planning and preparing and reflecting on teaching domains. And what's going to happen here is there's going to be a little bit of variance depending on the level. So high schools are looking at implementing all four domains and having all of those open. Elementary and middle are going to be looking at doing a little variety there. So I think elementary wants to go just a little slower with their implementation. So looking at adding a few more of the DQs within Domain One, which was on the prior screen, and then keeping Domain Four. And I think Middle Level is going to do somewhere in between those two levels. But all four domains will be open. So that's where we will be heading for the upcoming school year. Any questions on that at all? And Dr. Agri, of course, can answer questions as well related to this, if you have them.
No questions? Thank you very much. All right. Moving on to the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve?
Okay. So moved with the additional HR.
All right. There's been a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying yes. Yes. Opposed? Motion passes. Onto business. A bond sale approval for Discovery Middle School Memo 133. Jackie Gap or Dr. Schatz, would either of you like to speak to this? Jackie?
Thank you. I can certainly do that. We have passed our 60-day protest period, and there were no protests that were filed. So we are now ready to begin the issuance of the bonds, and the attached resolutions will need to be signed this evening or tomorrow. I believe Jo Lynn will get ahold of you should you approve this. And I am trying to get in contact with Myron from PFM, so I believe he will probably be here at that July 10th meeting to go over the sale and the results that we received. So we would ask your approval to proceed with the issuance of the bonds.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
All right. There's been a motion and a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Excuse me, Dr. Schatz? Okay.
As you heard Jackie explain this, I have to say this before I leave as superintendent, but Jackie is doing a fabulous job as your business manager, and she will be terrific in the future for you. Quietly has assumed that role and just does her work day-to-day. And I think as you've seen through the budget-building process and everything that's going on within the business manager's office, she is incredibly capable, and I just wanted to let you know how much I appreciated that. So you've done great work, and this, again, is just reflective of that. So thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay. Anne Marie, go ahead, please.
Ulrich?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes.
Goldenberg?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Roenbiker?
Yes.
Knutson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Policy monitoring. EL7, 8, and 9. Dinah?
I move that we accept EL7, 8, and 9 as presented.
And is there a second for that?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve EL7, 8, and 9. And is there any discussion? Okay. No discussion. Anne Marie, go ahead.
Boyd?
Yes.
Goldenberg?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Roenbiker?
Yes.
Ulrich?
Yes.
Knutson?
Yes. Motion passes. All right. Moving right along to board reports. Committee liaison and correspondence reports. How about Kristi?
I attended the FPS Foundation meeting last week, and that is the extent of my report.
All right. John?
We met with the FEA for negotiations back on the 14th and had quite an epic meeting. We are still talking. Next meeting date to be determined. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, John. Jim?
State School Board met last week, last weekend. We approved our operating budget. We reviewed the convention agenda, and I want to thank Linda. She had suggested a speaker who has roots from North Dakota, but I believe he's in Ohio now, Pennsylvania. And he will be on our agenda. So you may want to attend one more State School Board meeting just for the fun of it.
I might just come hang.
Yep. We also approved sending a letter of support for Dinah to finish her term on ESPB, which was unanimously approved by the State School Board. We're working on putting together a new strategic vision for the association, and we determined the slate of officers for this coming fall's election. Holly Stromstedt from Findlay Sharon will be running for president, and Carl Lumke from Bismarck will be the VP nominee. And the only other thing I have to report is there are 36 days till the picnic.
And that means we need to be getting some prizes, don't we? Yes. All right. David?
I have nothing, Madam President.
Dinah?
Wow. So last time. The only official, or I guess the official reports are, thank you, Jim, and the State School Board. I also have the support of the ESPB Board also would like me to stay. So it's now in the governor's hands, since I'm willing. And my last sort of board official duty is to attend this Thursday. I think I've told you over time that the Board of Health is doing accreditation, and on Thursday, the Health Board is meeting with the accreditation folks. So since I've been the president virtually most of that time, I'm participating in that. And just, I guess, good luck to the rest of you. I'll miss doing this. But anyway, that's it for...
Thank you, Dinah. Linda?
Nothing to report because the Communications Committee meeting for June was canceled. So...
All right. And I wanted to mention that GAC met, and since Jennifer was not able to be here this evening, one thing she wanted me to bring up was, there was a conversation at GAC about resolutions to NDSBA. And Jim, I think you brought this up in regard to a deadline for resolutions. There weren't any resolutions that came out of GAC, but she wanted me to mention, was there anything that anyone, is there anything that you thought that should be brought forward? Anyone here, or a process for that? No? Okay. And I was at the new board member orientation just prior to this meeting with Brian Nelson. So that was nice to get to know him as well. And Anne Marie provided us all with the binders that the new board members received. So we all have that current. All right. And the president's report is passed around, and I did receive a note here from the Berry Foundation. And Dr. Schatz, if you just want to pass this around, since it was just sent to me, you guys can read through that, that would be fine. And now we have something where we get to recognize some of our board members that have been with us for quite some time. And I am turning it over. I don't know, who's going first? Kristi and Jim, you're both a part of this, aren't you? Okay. All right, Kristi. Thank you.
Linda? Today you complete your second term on the board. You won your first election as the top vote-getter in a race of nine candidates. During your eight years on the board, you shared your leadership skills through two board president terms during which two schools were opened, the district's accreditation was extended for another five years, and a successful mill levy was held. Additionally, during your tenure, you served as Chair of the Governmental Affairs Committee and as a board negotiator two times. You have thoroughly enjoyed your appointment to the Community Development Committee at the City of Fargo, of which you served the entire eight years on the board. Also during your time on the board, you were part of two superintendent searches and the onboarding of new board members. The last eight years have been extremely busy for our school board and district. We have focused on long-range facility planning, strategic planning, which has allowed us to prepare for the future of education in Fargo. During this time, decisions have been made on billing, attendance, boundaries, finances, programs, and policies. Your voice, background, and knowledge has been welcomed at the board table as we have grappled with the decisions set before us. Linda, as a board member, you have been an advocate for at-risk students and for the arts. Nothing has made you more excited than when students have presented or performed at our board meetings. The performing and visual arts have had such an impact on you and your family's life that you know of the utmost importance it must play in our educational system. In your time on the board, your professional life as executive director of the FM Symphony Orchestra has intersected with school life through bringing Symphony Rocks concert to Blue Stem, now in its eighth installment this August, having guest conductors and professional musicians work with our students, and hosting all district fourth graders at a symphonic or symphony performance. Thank you for ensuring that music comes alive in all of our schools. In addition, you champion the importance of diversity, equitable education for all students, and the need for access to services for our students and families. Linda, we sincerely thank you for your dedication to the students and families of our schools. We will miss you, your poise, and your quick wit at the board table. On behalf of the board, we've got a plaque to present to you.
Okay, go for it. Okay, go for it. Be all witty.
Okay, well, I don't know if I have any of that left. Thank you so much. It's been a wonderful eight years. I particularly want to thank Jackie and Brittany and Rachel and Bob. And in terms of the expertise that you bring and the dedication that you bring, the realms of expertise, I'm going to miss you so much, Rachel. Thank you for, Dr. Augree, thank you for all your professional wisdom and tireless work. We truly appreciate it. As for Anne Marie and Dr. Schatz, the two years that I had the privilege of serving as president, I got to work very closely with both of you and unforgettable in a good way. Thank you for your amazing dedication and we're a better district for both of you. I probably can't say much more beyond that. But to my fellow board members, it's been a pleasure and an honor meeting every single one of you and you have many challenges ahead and I know that we're in good hands. Thanks for all your work.
Thank you, Linda. Jim?
Dinah, tonight is almost the end of your 12 years of service to the Fargo Board of Education. You were elected to the board in 2006 and to the best of my knowledge, you were the first Canadian national to serve. And you were certainly the first person running for office to be accused of being a communist. I think they confused Canada with communism. But it was a mantra that you wore well, especially in San Francisco. You attended many board meetings prior to being elected on the board and you were sitting back there in the audience with your knitting needles, building something. You've always said you had to keep your hands busy to refrain from talking during the meeting. I'm not sure that was the real case, but we appreciated your diligence in learning who we were before your first day at the board table. During your time on the board, you have given tirelessly of your time and talents to work for our district and for the betterment of education for our students. You have been very active in our district as a board member and in the community. You served as board president during your tenure, chaired the Communications Committee five times, served as a board negotiator three times, including this season. Additionally, your work as a board member has extended to other roles, such as serving on the Education Standards and Practice Board for the state of North Dakota, Fargo Cass Public Health Board, Trollwood Coordinating Council, and the FPS Foundation Board. Always seeking information and knowledge, you have been diligent in attending professional development throughout North Dakota and National School Board Association conferences. You seem to find great enjoyment in attending school events, even after your two sons graduated from the system, and seeing the educational process in action. When Davies High School was built, you gave of your time to ensure that all of the opening events were planned and executed wonderfully for our community. And I might add, it came off without a hitch. Our district has changed greatly during your time on the board. We've established a consistent grade configuration throughout the district, added full-day kindergarten, built numerous schools, remodeled others, sold and bought land and buildings, reconfigured attendance boundaries more than once, and you have been part of the hiring process for three superintendents and part of the creation of our operational plans, strategic plans, and long-range facility plans. Dinah, the perspective you bring to this boardroom has been appreciated and will be missed. You always focus on the needs of equity and education for all children. And probably the one lasting gift you've given to all of us board members was you really crafted a solid plan for school liaisons and made that a standard part of our operating procedure and I thank you for that. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your time and commitment to this board and to the students of Fargo Public Schools. And on behalf of the board, I would like to present you with this beautiful plaque suitable for hanging in Las Vegas homes.
Thank you. Now do I get to keep this part too?
Yes, you do.
What? Oh, he's smiling.
Every once in a while.
Okay, so I probably can't talk for as long as Linda without crying because my family knows that I can't talk on happy or sad occasions. So you'll have to figure out which one this is. Wow, 12 years is a long time. And Jim's the only one who's been here the whole time. So thank you, Jim, for being a great role model and for a great teacher and for helping keep this board together for all those years. Thank you, Linda, for eight great years. And thank you to some of those who are not here anymore, who are also great mentors. Robin is returning, Rick, and Laura Carley, and Dan Premeling, and several others who I don't want to forget anybody, so I'll stop now. And thank you to all of those of you who are staying and best of luck going forward. As Linda said, you have challenges ahead, but I think no matter when we decide to leave, you always feel that there's something else you could have done. But you'll figure it out without Linda and I. To the administration, first of all, Rachel, best of luck in your new adventures. You will be missed. The rest of you have been great to work with. Jeff is keeping very quiet today, but best of luck in your adventures. I have served with and, as said, hired three superintendents. That was not part of the plan in the beginning. But I think you're in good hands with number three hire. Best of luck to you, Jeff and Anne Marie. That's about as far as I can go, so thank you.
Are we having a group picture after this? And a big group hug too, Anne Marie? Is that after our meeting adjourns?
We can do that, yep.
There are Kleenexes over in the corner. Thank you, thank you. I want to also mention that it is listed on the president's report. Of course, we have a celebration tomorrow evening honoring Dr. Schatz, not tomorrow evening late. It actually starts at four and goes to 5:30 here in the boardroom. So of course, we're all invited to come back here for that. And now I'm wondering if there is the need for us to move on to number nine on our agenda? John?
President Knutson, I would like to make a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of negotiation strategy, as permitted under North Dakota Entry Code, Section 44-04-19.1.
Okay, there's been a motion. Is there a second to that?
Second.
All right, motion and a second, all in favor, yes? Yes?
Yes.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, board members will remain in the room. Do we need a little break beforehand or a quick break? Okay, thank you.
... David is saying that the fact finding commission went above and beyond in terms of their recommendations?
They, if you look, they, some of the things they mentioned are... So, we did make the point early in this discussion that you have at least two committees that exist that are handling some of those things. Of course, taking care of the whole background committee. I think the other two committees that share that membership will be better collaborations. I think that's fine that we work at the board to create something else that is made appropriate and fit for action. How would we do that in a democratic situation? I would think what we do, just in fact, we feel as a board, we just would need the safety committee. We would direct the superintendent to set up an operational plan to come back with their recommendation or the makeup and put this in responsibility to safety committee. Ask them to do that if at all possible, as soon as possible. And I think we have to leave the superintendent's lab. Otherwise, we are no longer a government. We need to come and operate.
Yeah, agreed. You had mentioned that it was the findings of the administration to conduct the committee that, like, somewhere in the description, maybe learning the directions to establish those in the new language that this committee didn't recommend.
I would say the superintendent. That's who puts together the policies that impact safety, the administrative policies there and how to do it. So, by the end of that night, the language we had come up with said, "The Department of Public Schools Superintendent, collaboration staff representatives, including the Department of Education Association president, will determine its mission, structure, composition of committee, committee format, and the rules of operations."
Do we need to take action on this outside of this leadership superintendent action here? How does this memo come from negotiations? Do you have to do it?
No, I would ask the President to put a business item on July's board agenda for addressing everybody's operational plan. At which time, if there's a good direction, we would like to set up a people and family to create a safety committee, determine its purpose and structure, and make it part of the operational plan, hopefully to be effective before the end of this calendar. But again, I don't want to have a hard gate because we got a brand-new safety director coming in, we got a brand-new superintendent. We got a lot of professionals to give us some guidance. The reason, personally, to put forward, to track, to put it on the agenda for us, and to take that to July board, is to add that to the activity.
Yes, I'd be happy to do that. Also, we have to realize that it does not mean that it will be enough for that. Because I felt like after we had that conversation, or after you in the last meeting had that conversation with them, first it was Mr. Gandhi's offer to have the meeting the following day, and then, second, the conversation about this committee. It seemed like they were still looking for something as part of the contract. No matter what we were willing to do, I felt like we could have done ten things that would have helped to ensure greater safety. And as long as it wasn't in the contract, then it's great, but we need it in the contract. But if we decide, we still end up deciding it's something that we need to do, then that's one thing, we might need to do that, as we've discussed tonight, but it still might not get us past. But it's an effort, it's a good effort to go for. Linda?
I think that we have it established, we have it, everything is part of the rule that we have to do. If we ever do what I intend, we can figure that out, then we'll find a safer way to act.
Dr. Schatz?
Do you want some final words of wisdom or observation? I would ask that you consider asking Mr. Gandhi to be very careful with what he's doing with this because by doing what you did and him doing that the next day, you put him directly into negotiation. And whatever was said will be used. And I'm sure they tape recorded it, I'm sure they videotaped it. And so, you have now taken your superintendent and put him directly into the middle of the negotiation process, and he's not even on board yet. So, that is very concerning to me as an outside observer, and I appreciate that, would you?
Thank you for that. I shot down my last speech.
Okay. Do we need to meet as a meeting, be now in this board meeting, or do we want to use this, do we have the board, do we want to change this? You know, we can call it a meeting, we can have time to draw, and we can talk. Or if we want to, we can, if we want to, we can, if we want to, we can. Again, I don't think we need to do that. We want to do it. Do you want to show that we find that we are unavailable all next week ourselves? So, I believe...
When you talk about different language, are you asking for a memo to go to the board on July's tense? I'm just wondering what we're talking about. I think about that.
Yes, that we have to say, we need to give a memo for action. At that...
Does there need to be a memo, though?
There needs to be one. I sure am. First, I'll be happy to have a memo.
So, are we not going to have a board on that? Board has a business item on that meeting? Yes? Yes. Okay. We will close the executive session at six fifty-six P.M. And the same individuals are in the room at the end of the meeting that were here at the beginning.
It is six fifty-seven P.M.